Good evening, Rockland, and welcome to the school committee meeting of Monday, February 26, 2018. First on tonight's agenda is acceptance of the meeting minutes of February 12, 2018.
Votes are approved.
We have a second. All those in favor? Thank you. That is a vote. Without objection from the rest of the committee, I'd just like to make a bit of an alteration in tonight's agenda. We have a full house tonight with some smiling faces from the Jefferson School here tonight for Curriculum Corner. And in the interest of not boring these fine young ladies and gentlemen with the rest of our agenda, we'd like to move them right up to the front to be able to hear from the Jefferson School Grade One Math Workshop and the Grade One students of Mrs. Savage Caprio, Mrs. Leander, and Ms. Ray. So, welcome. Dr. Cron.
Great. I'd like to turn it over to Principal Shifely and her staff and her students.
And her students. This is students we care about.
That's right. Looking spiffy.
So, just before we begin, I just wanted to let you know this Jefferson first-grade team will be presenting about math workshop tonight. It's not a curriculum or a set of prescribed activities, but it's an approach to teaching mathematics. This approach teaches number sense, allows students the time, space, to think like mathematicians and to use tools for thinking, and allows the teachers time to work in guided, small group, math groups to help those that need acceleration or those that need a little review. All three elementary schools are using this model for teaching mathematics, and our teachers have worked diligently with the guidance of our lead math teachers to bring math workshop to our K-4 classrooms. We are using this book throughout the district, K-4 Math Workshop in Action by Nikki Newton, and it's guiding our discussions and our professional development. So, tonight, we have Jefferson's first-grade teaching team of Ms. Ray, who's our, happens to also be our lead teacher at Jefferson School, Mrs. Caprio, and Mrs. Leander, here to share with you math workshop with help from some of our first-grade students. And when you hear your name, give a little wave, okay? Cody Kalopouris, Riley Conlon, Grace Gillespie, Daniel Driscoll, Shay Clark, Victoria Pumphrey, and Callie Casa Grande. And I'd just tell you that it is a joy to see these kids work in math. It's my favorite part of the day. So, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Tonight, we are going to teach you about math workshop. In first grade, every day, we start math workshop with a number talk.
A number talk is a mental math problem that our teacher presents to us. We share different strategies for solving the problem.
We use hand symbols to show our thinking. This means I am thinking. This means I have a solution. This means I have more than one strategy, and this means I agree.
Here is your first problem, eighteen plus eight. Thumbs up when you have a solution. Remember to keep your hand by your heart and no shouting.
Who would like to share a strategy?
So, you need to give them a little time to think. So, we're asking the school committee to look at this and see how many ways they can solve this problem.
Well, if we count in tens, right? If we started at eighteen, if we went ten up from eighteen, we'd be at twenty-eight, right? So, we sort of...
I think you were supposed to use your symbols and put your hand over your heart.
Oh, I do. I apologize.
That's why you're here to teach him.
I apologize.
Daniel, repeat the direction. What do we do?
What's like that? It's like that, right?
No, it's Shay's. Don't shout out.
Okay.
Go ahead, Dave.
Go ahead, Dave.
Okay.
We use hand symbols to show our thinking. This means I'm thinking. This means I have a solution. This means I have more than one strategy, and this means I agree.
So, if we have eighteen and we add a ten, we'd be at twenty-eight. And I know that eight is two less than ten, so I would think that then the solution would be twenty-six. So, that would be one way to solve it, right?
The other way is eighteen, then you go nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, twenty-two. No, that's not it. That's not it. I'm sorry.
That would be counting on, right?
Another strategy. Yes. Many strategies. Bradley, wanna call in one more?
Michael.
Oh, I knew that was me. I mean, I just would look at it and go, I know that eight plus eight is sixteen, and then I would carry that one and make it twenty-six.
Here's how we do it fast.
So, if you give two from the eight and give it to the eighteen, equals twenty, then there's six left from the eight. So, twenty plus six equals twenty-six.
Now, he's gonna show you another strategy that they might use.
So, if you give eight from the eighteen and give it to the eight, equals sixteen, then there's ten left from the eighteen, so ten plus sixteen equals twenty-six, and that is a double fact.
A doubles fact. So, they use eight plus eight, a doubles fact, to help them.
Sixteen.
Like, a number and the same number, you do that, and you do, like, say, two plus two equals four.
Here is a sticky note. I to write the missing number.
Sometimes our teachers gives us more challenging problems to think about during the day. What do you notice or wonder about?
What do you notice or wonder about this picture?
Say, what is the missing number?
What is the missing number?
And then you just see it. Do you pass out the sticky? Give them each a sticky note, so that they can put their thinking down on paper, too.
You gotta show your thinking.
I don't think you wanna see my thinking. Thank you.
This is where I always get in trouble on math, but I didn't show my work. Thank you. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
No one yet?
Just one thing?
Yes.
Okay. Well, I'll leave out the number, 'cause I'll let someone else answer that one, but I was wondering about the circles, the colors, and if there was, you know, if all the even numbers or odd numbers had the same color, and they don't, so I don't really understand the logic behind the colors, other than they go, you know, one to the next to the next. So, that's a question. Would I have failed?
It's two questions.
Yes.
So, what I'm seeing is a pattern, okay? So, I'm seeing at the corners above the six and the four, I'm seeing in purple two threes, and below the threes, I'm seeing two sevens, and at the bottom, I'm seeing an eight. So, I'm thinking that the eight should be, is what should be on top. Is that correct?
That's right. Consensus?
I agree, 'cause I was thinking the same thing. Look at the eight in the purple, and I said, it's the colors that are giving it away.
Well, I'd like to let you know that one of our first graders in that class got it in less than two minutes. They solved it.
I know what the answer is.
We haven't told you the answer yet.
Daniel?
Daniel, wanna come up?
The numbers diagonal from each other equals ten. For example, seven and three, six and four. So, the missing number is two. Maybe it's ten.
Wow!
Here is your schedule for the rest of math workshop.
Here is, here is your schedule for the rest of math workshop.
After the number talk, our teacher, teachers will save any lesson.
Then we'll push up into groups. One group goes with a teacher, one group goes on Reflex, and the other group works with a partner on the skill of the day or play review games.
The groups rotate, so everyone gets a turn to meet with the teacher.
Right now, we'll come back together on the web and share what we learned today in mathematics.
Here are some of the tools we use for math workshop. This is a whack-and-whack. We use it to add and to track up to twenty.
Here's an example. Two minus two, four minus two equals two.
Excuse me. Question. Would you call that?
What's the name of that?
A whack-and-whack.
A what?
A whack-and-whack.
Okay.
Is that related to Wreck-It Ralph?
Wreck-It Ralph.
Whack-and-whack.
Looks like an abacus, too. You're probably used to an abacus.
Tom still use?
I do. Two point oh.
Inside, we have snack food.
Dice.
Our math folders have hundred charts, ten frames, and part, part, whole mats.
Thank you for listening, and we hope you enjoyed a presentation on math workshop.
That one that we did with the tens, you know, the ones and nines and colors and stuff like that? You have a copy of that? I gotta take that to school tomorrow, give it to my students.
We can send it to you.
Thank you.
So, we've earned a few things tonight, right? First of all, the school committee in Rockland has real difficulty with first-grade math.
I can do an equation.
But secondly, that we've got some really talented kids here tonight and some really great teachers. Now, also, that math has changed quite a bit, boys and girls. How you learn math has changed quite a bit since I was a little boy, and from these ladies and gentlemen, we're little boys, and it's very interesting, I think, and probably a far better way to learn. I mean, because they're able to conceptualize the problem from many different perspectives, whether it be, you know, it's not just one solution, one way to find the answer to the question. We're looking at it three different ways, and I know this because I have a first grader. My Ronan is a student of Mrs. Ray's, so we do a lot of this work every night. Yeah, that's my, Ronan Biggins is my son. That's right. But I've had to, I've had to learn this really, again, myself, but it's really interesting. And I can see that our teachers are really doing a great job at it. Do you guys enjoy math? Do you guys like it?
Yes!
Yeah? That's awesome.
Mr. Biggins, can I just say something?
Yes, ma'am.
The wreck-and-racks were made by a maintenance department, and how many teachers, and how many do we make?
We made lots. I think it was a lot. It was for every K-2 teacher in all of the elementary.
In the district, they made them. Instead of purchasing them.
Every K-2 teacher. Because these are expensive, so we made them.
So, what did you make of it? String and beads?
And the whiteboard.
The maintenance team cut them.
Maintenance team, it was a team.
I think we found a shop project for the kids.
Exactly. From the teacher's perspective, how has this changed how you teach math?
Totally different now. To really differentiate, we get to have small guided groups in math, and while we're doing the guided groups, we get to know them as mathematicians, and the number talk is wonderful. It's so amazing to see the children and all the different ways they can solve problems, and they work together, and they build upon the answers together, and then just watching them play the games and having fun in math, and it's just great seeing them engaged and having a blast. So, it's, it's not the traditional way of sitting at your seat, open up to your book. We don't have books at all. It's a lot of fun. I think the kids enjoy it.
So, kids, how many of you are on your level with Reflex?
I'm past one hun, I'm one hundred.
I'm eighty-nine. I'm eighty, I'm eighty-two.
I'm in the sixties.
They're working on addition and subtraction, so, yeah.
So, as you know, we purchase Reflex math, and, 'cause what we've discovered is that these foundational skills, right? The math facts, and same in literacy with vocabulary, these are very fundamental, that you can't get away from knowing. You can't get creative with it till you have it concrete. It's really, it's really fun to hear you guys speak so enthusiastically about math.
And on the Reflex, too, I just, I really love that as a tool. I mean, it's, it's easy to be a skeptic of something that a kid can pick up and do on an iPad to learn, but it really is great, because it forces them to find the solution as a, as opposed to the traditional math worksheet, map worksheet that I took home as a child. If I got the answer wrong, I didn't own, I got it wrong until the next day, whereas I watch my children with the Reflex and work hard at solving that problem and not be able to go on until they solve the problem and get it right and find a solution to it. So, it's, and they certainly enjoy it, so I hope you guys do, too.
It's not always easy, though, is it?
No.
I remember my Henry, some gnashing of teeth at the kitchen table, but...
It's easy for me.
Yeah.
And that's why we're here tonight, right?
But my Henry now is ten, and he looks back on it, and he says, it really helped me, so I'm really glad you guys are doing it.
I wanted to say, I really like the silent symbols. I think that that must do so much for your classroom to allow the kids that it takes a little bit longer to, to not kind of get railroaded and to be able to work at their own pace, and so I just love that aspect of it.
And thank you for reminding me earlier of how to use it.
This is, this is the difference between little boys and little girls.
So true, so true.
It's true.
Outstanding. Any other questions from the committee?
I, I think it's great. I, I will fully admit, I still have a hard time wrapping my head around this, because I was the old-school way, and I was really good at the old-school way. Mr. Damon used to tell me to stop yelling out answers before he finished the equation on the board, so for me to sit there and look at that, I'm like, I mean, it's eighteen and eight, it's twenty-six, like, well, no, there's different ways to do that. So, I actually watched my daughter do her math homework, and I'm like, oh, okay, that's what these lines and blocks and stuff mean. I get it now. So, at first, I was like, this makes no sense. The more I see it, I think it's great, especially for the kids who don't take off of math right away, 'cause as we know, math is one of those subjects that you either get it and you run with it, or it takes you a bit to get it. So, I think it's great, and I love watching the kids enjoy it, so it's awesome. Great job.
Very good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Great job. Give it up.
It's the best. It's the best, yeah.
I love it.
Okay, next on tonight's agenda, yeah, kids and families, by the way, feel free to, you don't need to stay, and enjoy the rest of tonight's exciting meeting. You're welcome to, but feel free to get home and do the bedtime routine.
Do your math.
Thank you.
Do your math, Reflex. Get to a hundred percent. Seeing nothing under audience, next on tonight's agenda is the superintendent's report. Dr. Cron.
Hey, I'm gonna be very brief. I just wanna say, contract negotiations with the teachers are still ongoing. We have our third meeting coming up on Monday, March 5th, and I believe that's three thirty, or three forty-five, yeah. And I would also like to pass things over to Colleen to talk a little bit about the building project and the OPM search, so just to give you an update on that.
Okay, we have, the OPM submissions were due February 14th from the firms that wanted to apply. We received twelve packets, twenty pages long each, lots of information, explaining the firms, their expertise, their experience, schools they've built, the money, and so forth, the resumes of the key players involved, their financials. We narrowed down to the selection committee, which is made up of eight school, building committee members voted in. We went over each packet, we took them home for the weekend, was a lot to pour over. We shortlisted, after we met twice, we shortlisted to five firms, and those five firms were rated on a scale from one to four for twelve different, I did twelve different categories. We had a whole form to fill out, an evaluation criteria form to fill out. So, Wednesday, each firm will come to present about forty-five minutes for the selection committee, and after that, we will ask questions to each firm, the same questions, and the next step will be preferences. Submit everything to MSBA by March 7th for their approval, and then we're off and running if they approve of what we approved of. So, next steps, I'll let you know.
Very exciting. Seems it's moving along quickly now, as things are going along.
Very quickly. We have deadlines to meet, and we've met them all, yeah, very strict deadlines.
Yeah, outstanding. Good news.
She's shooting a pile of homework.
Oh, I know, the packets are amazing, amazing. Hard work that whole committee's doing, by the way. The building committee's a great group of folks. It really is, and it's a really diverse group, and we're looking forward to our next meeting when we hear more about this, this process.
And I have one final thing. If you're a Rockland resident and you have a five-year-old, someone who will be five years old by September 1st, please call 781-878-1540 to set up an appointment to register your kindergartner. So, again, if your son or daughter will be five years old by September 1st, please call That's the superintendent's office, and we'll set up an appointment. That's all I have.
Well-oiled machine. I did it today with Charlotte. It was...
Great. That's what we like to hear.
Good to hear. Thank you, Dr. Cron. Next on tonight's agenda, financial reports for January. We have five reports that will requiring five motions. We have reports from the school department, the high school student athletic, excuse me, high school student activities, middle school student activities, cafeteria, and daycare.
Five motions.
We have five motions, we have five seconds.
Five seconds.
All those in favor? That's a vote. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
The other one that I wanted to mention, too, I mean, oh, great, I mean, looking at the daycare, that's, that's moving right along, isn't it?
Really is. What a story.
Yep.
As difficult as that, as difficult as that process was, it was...
Good turnaround.
So refreshing, and it's great to see that program become what it, what it could be.
And because of it, we have enrichment programs, which I give you on your Thursday mornings, you can see those, and also the summer camp, this year, we'll have some enrichment programs every day.
Well, most important part, Rockland families are being served.
Absolutely.
Good to hear, good to hear. Under old business, item A, we have a request for approval for an out-of-country field trip to Quebec City, Canada, and we have with us tonight Brian Willett from Explorica. Welcome to you and Ms. Dory.
So, I'm a senior sales executive for Explorica, and so I'm here to answer any questions you may have about out-of-country trips, any concerns, anything that I can help answer.
The question I have is, and this is, the question is, what is your protocol if something happens, goes wrong, there's an incident that, you know, because you are out of country, it's a different, it's a difference, to me, it's a different set of sequences that you have to go through. If you could just go through and explain how, you know, your organization handles those...
Sure. It's a fantastic question. I think that's, it's looming in everybody's minds. Safety is our number-one concern. If there's anything, or if at any point, anybody feels unsafe to travel anywhere, we don't want you traveling. And it's important for us, you know, because travel changes so many people's lives, that, you know, we, you have a full-time tour director that's with you through the whole, the whole entire time, even if they live next door, they still have to stay in the same hotels with the group, plus there is also a guard at night that, that we hire as well. And then, of course, we have the chaperones as the teacher for the kids. And of course, they all have times they have to be into their rooms, and we just make sure, we check at night, make sure everything's okay, and then we all get up at the same exact time in the morning and start the whole entire tour there. If something was to happen, a world event, where the first people to know, we contact the tour directors, we find out, you know, what happened, what's going on. If something was to happen, for example, what happened in London, the London bombings, we had people that were going to London that day, as soon as they got to London, we put them on the Euro, the Eurostar and brought them to Paris. We didn't want them in London, we took care of the situation, and when they got, we contacted every single parent that was actually on this trip to let them know that their kids are safe, and as soon as they get to, to Paris, we required them to call home, okay?
What about medical emergencies? How do you handle those?
Yeah, medical emergencies, if something was to ever happen, the tour directors, of course, they work for Explorica. We assess the situation, of course, we use the, if it's something, we have to get them to the hospital immediately, we have somebody that will be able to go with them, to go to the hospital with them, or if it's nothing, if it's a major scrape, or somebody broke a bone or something, and you have to go to urgent care, we'll take them to urgent care or to the hospital, but again, we'll evaluate the situation.
Do you, how do you handle power of attorney? Because each country might have a different aspect of, you know, who has the legal right to ask for medical attention. If the parents aren't there, and the student is not capable of doing that, how do you handle that?
I can speak to that one. There's a ton of paperwork before I take my students on the trips, and power of attorney form is one of those, and I bring copies of the students' health cards, photocopies that I keep on me at all times, and the power of attorney form. We also have the students' paperwork to travel to Canada. They don't require the passport unless you're eighteen and over right now, if you're a school group, so, but we do have to get it, get the special stamp, notarized. Yes, we have to get the parent's permission signed on there that it's notarized, that we're able to take their child out of the country. Certainly, the parent would be the first call, and fortunately, we've never had that. I also will not travel as the only chaperone ever on a trip for that very reason, in case somebody did fall ill or needed medical attention. I wouldn't be leaving the group behind to go to the hospital with the student. It'd always be another chaperone.
And you maintain all that paperwork as, as the guide, as the, the chaperone?
I would keep it with me. Actually, we do organize it into a binder, and the stuff that I need when we're out and about touring, the medical things, all of that, I keep on me at all times. We kind of split it up between the two chaperones. Some of the other paperwork, like the fact that the students sign off on the rules forms before they go, those things, I just keep a spreadsheet, knowing that, yes, they agreed to the rules, parents signed it, that stuff's not as urgent, certainly.
Right. How about medication? You know, you make sure that the medication that's going into the country and coming out of the country is legal?
We do. We have, in my previous district, I had the, the students had to work with the nurse and turn in any medical, any prescriptions, had to be a new prescription, a new unopened bottle, that they had just got from the pharmacy. They had to have the original container as they travel, and the nurse collected everything ahead of time, and then we were responsible. So, if a student needed, for example, like ADD medication, they had to take that, that was given to the chaperones to administer to students.
Okay, so you maintain the medication?
We did, yeah. I had a training, EpiPens, that kind of stuff, absolutely.
You're saying you did it before in your previous, are we doing that with this trip?
I, I would. I'm curious to, and I can talk to Mrs. Walsh a little bit about how she links up with the nurse ahead of time and how that works out, how she has done that in the past.
I think that's a procedure we should have, yeah. Make sure that's all documented for us, yeah, yeah.
We also have documents that we actually can give to teachers as well, that's just a sheet that they can sign off, mom and dad can sign off, saying these are, this is the medication that they're taking, because a lot of it's confidentiality, so that's why we just wanna make sure that we have all of our ducks in a row.
Mr. Willett, thank you for being here with us tonight. You know, I know last, last week, we, last school committee meeting, we chatted a bit about this the first time, and we made the request to have a representative from the company be here, has been the past practice of this committee, anytime that we've approved out-of-country international trips, just a precedent that we feel is important, just to make sure that we're taking our due diligence, to make sure that our children are safe and the company that we're entrusting them to has done their due diligence, and that that we're entrusting them to has done their due diligence, and that they have the resources in place to be able to make sure that everything is safe. Unfortunately, this committee has been, the school has been through some tough times with international travel in the past, and it's made us learn some lessons to make sure that we, you know, know everything that's going on. So I really appreciate you being here, first of all. Second of all, having, during the time that I've been on the committee, I haven't had the opportunity to work with your particular company. I just wonder if you might give us a little bit of background on it and tell us a little bit about maybe yourself and the company, and maybe about your resources and a little bit about yourselves.
Sure. So Explorica, we've been around for 20 years. We were just acquired by the largest student travel company in the United States, which is called World Strides. We're now actually a sister company of World Strides. We didn't change anything, we're just now a product of World Strides, which, we annually bring over 400,000 people around the United States and Canada. We also have a $50 million liability insurance that covers teachers and schools, which is the highest in the industry. And we take care of our teachers, we train them, and we have all the, anything people need or parents need, they can always call our customer service department. And I've been with the company for seven years now, and I've been doing educational sales for a long time. My background is aviation flight operations, which is my degree, so being in the airline industry is something that I'm, you know, that I love, and travel as well, and teachers, I have so much respect for teachers, and putting, you know, education and aviation together, bingo, I'm in the right industry, so.
Mr. Phelps.
I'm just curious now, going to Quebec, which is, I think, a great idea, by the way. I think it's a wonderful city to visit, and with French, it's ideal. But you mentioned, back to something that you've addressed, somebody falls ill, seriously ill, you mentioned that the tour director would go to the hospital with them. What's left? What other people in Quebec do you have to call on for help in the case of a real emergency?
That's a good question. So we have offices all over the world, and we also have one in Quebec.
Okay.
So if something was to ever happen, we have an office in Quebec where we can actually have someone, you know, if the tour director's going to help, but the tour director usually has to stay with the group, well, you can have somebody else from our company go with that person.
So there are resources there other than the tour director?
Yes, that is absolutely correct, yes. We have an office in Canada as well, a big, big office, it's our Canadian headquarters is in Toronto. We also have another office in Quebec City. And also, another thing is, is if anything was to ever happen, as a company, we do what's in our best interest and your best interest, we would, if a parent has to be there, we'd work with the parent to get them there as soon as possible to be there with their child.
If something tragic happened, you could get the group home before it was necessary?
100%, and we would actually work with the parent directly before anything was ever made publicly.
Great.
What would be the company policy, just as far as recourse for the kids and, you know, money spent if an international event happened just prior to the trip?
It's a good question. So we do have an insurance that actually allows people to, if at any reason there's a terrorist attack, under 30 days prior to departure, we can give money back to people. Or we can actually choose a different destination, and of course, in the past, if it's a major event that we need to do, we, of course, want to make sure that they travel with us again, so we administer full refunds.
Very good.
Travel health insurance, is that part of the package? Is that something that parents buy separately from the package?
It can be purchased, so we do have a separate insurance that they can purchase. So it includes medical and accident insurance, tour cancellation interruption insurance, baggage and property insurance, and if there was ever a terrorist attack under 30 days prior to departure, to get their money back, or stop them from traveling and just, you know, forget the whole...
So that's all separate on top of the cost of the trip?
Yeah, it's, there's two packages, there's one that's $12 a day and one that's 18 a day, and so the trip being four days, it would be either 48 or...
Okay.
Where are the math kids? I need them.
You got any feedback on interest? Have you been able to gauge interest from kids talking about it, or?
Yeah, I've mentioned it in all my classes, they know that tonight I was presenting again and hoping. I just did a quick show of hands of some students, and in each class, I have four French classes right now, and across that, there was definitely a handful of hands that went up each time.
Well, I think it's going to be a great trip, and I, for one, am really excited about it for you. I think it's going to be a great opportunity. Sounds good.
Motion to approve. Second.
All those in favor? That's a vote. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Very excited.
Mr. Willett, thank you again for being here with us. Appreciate it. Thank you. Okay. Next up, under old business, under item B, we have a request for approval for physical restraint prevention and behavior support procedures, policy, and this is a second reading.
The only comment I have, this has been not ours in particular, but restraints, you know, physical restraints has been in the news recently.
Oh, yeah, no doubt.
Literally just came out today.
Yeah, no doubt.
And it's like that.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Those in favor? That is a vote. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Next up, we have completed fundraisers for your information. We had a couple successful ones. The Eston Pack had a Little Caesar's Pizza Night that raised $484, which, where is their Little Caesar's? How did that?
They're like prepackaged now. You can...
Was it a supermarket frozen pizza?
You get frozen packages together.
I was going to say, it's the only pizza shop we don't have in town.
No kidding. We do not have a puppet shop.
Just saying.
Well played, Mr. Phelps. Absolutely right.
Or Regina's. I mean, we could, there's a list.
Nonetheless, they were able to raise $484, which is absolutely outstanding. The high school guidance department had a trivia night, which raised $2,100, which is absolutely great.
What, did everybody get trivia wrong?
Must be, must be.
That'd be neat.
Good news. Under new business, tonight we have school choice. Dr. Cron.
I request that we approve school choice for the town of Rockland for the coming school year.
Very good.
Motion to approve.
You have a motion? Any questions from the committee?
Second, no.
Second, okay. All those in favor? That is a vote. Thank you very much. School choice, I think that all, is something that all in all has been something that's been very successful for the town of Rockland.
Sorry, I have one quick question.
Please, go ahead.
Because I missed this last year when we went through it. How is it chosen? How do we, do we pick when students submit their application? Is there certain criteria we're looking for? Are we looking for, say, if we have three kids from the same town, but one kid might be a better student, better...
No, we're not allowed to really pick and choose that way, so it's open until it's closed.
Okay.
And so if we have, if we have 10 seats in first grade, the first 10 that come are the 10 that get it, yeah.
Plus, it's a sibling, sibling gets priority.
And you're right, there is the sibling priority.
That makes sense, yeah, okay. Just, that's what I thought, but I just wanted to make sure.
Currently have 60 students in district from other towns.
Wow, that's great.
It is great.
Outstanding.
Yep.
Next up, item C, we have a request for approval of fundraisers. The, under Rockland High School, the book club is doing a sale of lollipops in February and March. That's very good. We have a motion. Do we have a second? We have a second, all those in favor? That's a vote. Thank you very much. Next up, we have a request for approval of the Captain Robert W. Woodward Memorial Scholarship. Dr. Cron, do you have a recommendation?
I recommend that we approve this scholarship.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor? That is a vote. Thank you very much. Last up, but maybe most importantly and most timely, is item D, our school safety review. Of course, nationally, we're all very much painfully aware of the events that happened in Florida just a couple weeks ago, and that continue to happen across our country at an alarmingly more frequent rate. We, of course, here in Rockland, as parents and school committee members and community members, hold the safety of our children in the utmost highest priority. What went on here last week here in Rockland schools, we're going to talk about just in a little bit, I know I'm going to turn over Dr. Cron for that, but just before I do, I just want to say, as a dad, not even so much as a school committee member, how comfortable I am with what happened and how pleased I am with what happened. The systems and the, and the programs and the preparation that we have in place was stressed and tested, and at the end of the day, showed that those that are in charge of our children, we have very good reason to trust them to our kids' care. So with that, I'll turn over our school safety review to Dr. Cron.
Thank you. I'm going to invite my colleagues to join me at the podium, I'm going to do one of my famous, come stand behind me and, as a symbol of, what's the word?
Exactly.
Go by height.
Well, I don't know about you, ladies and gentlemen, but I'm going right over there too.
Clip the guy with the gun. So the Rockland, the Rockland Public Schools have a comprehensive safety plan that addresses everything from fire to gas leaks to active shooter situations. Safety plan has been developed in cooperation with the Rockland Police Department and the Rockland Fire Department, and is constantly being revised. One recent update has been the adoption and implementation of ALICE, which is an active shooter response protocol. Leading the rollout of ALICE has been our school resource officer, Ethan Schnebel, and high school assistant principal, Kathy Paulding. With the help of a number of Rockland police officers, all faculty, staff and administration have received nearly four hours of training in this model. Kathy and Ethan will be leading a parent information session on March 19th in the high school auditorium, and the final step then will be to train our students in this model. Our emergency management team, which consists of all of our principals, it consists of the chief Duffy of the Rockland Fire Department, and Nick Zioli, Lieutenant Zioli of the Rockland Police Department, we have deputy chief Woolley there as well, and all of our principals, and at times we bring in, obviously, our school resource officer, Tim Daly, our school security guard. And at these meetings, we meet at least five times per year to review our current emergency plans, to discuss any, say, upcoming evacuation or fire drills or any special events that are coming up, but also to run tabletop exercises. So the tabletop exercises are us sitting around and saying, this just happened, what are you going to do? And I try to ask the, you know, police will have one, one of our meetings, and then fire department will have it the next meeting, so we get scenarios from different perspectives. And it's, it really is a great way for us to kick around, what are we going to do if? It helps us work out some of the kinks in our system, as well as helping us communicate. In fact, last Friday, the 16th of February, the Friday before vacation, the morning of the incident at the high school, we had an emergency team meeting at nine o'clock in the morning, but we were obviously unaware that our systems would be tested later that day. On February 26th at 1:25 PM, the Rockland Police Department contacted Rockland High School to report that two students, ages 14 and 15, allegedly made calls to a local news station threatening to shoot up Rockland High School. The middle school, high school and preschool immediately went into shelter in place, which lasted approximately 30 minutes. Both students were quickly apprehended by the Rockland Police Department, and no weapons were found at school or at the homes of either of the young men involved. At 2:25, my office issued a statement to the school community describing the reason for the shelter in place, notifying them that the shelter in place had been lifted, and informing them that students had returned to class and would be dismissed on time. All afternoon and evening events went on as usual. This incident drew press coverage from 10 major news organizations and resulted in a 4 o'clock PM press conference here in WRPS with Rockland Police Chief Llewellyn and myself. On Thursday, February 22nd, the Rockland Police Department announced that the 14-year-old male student would not be charged because it was determined by the courts that the other teen arrested, a 15-year-old male student, used the 14-year-old cellphone to allegedly call a Boston television news station and threaten harm to people at the school. The Rockland Police Department press, released a press release indicating that the 14-year-old was unaware of the 15-year-old's intentions when the call was allegedly made. So charges against one of the two young men have been dropped. Under state and federal privacy laws, we cannot release specifics about the discipline of the students involved in Friday's incident. However, disrupting our school community and causing fear is a serious violation of our handbook and of our core values, and is being dealt with accordingly. I'd now like to turn things over to Dr. Harrison, just to explain a little bit about what options are available to us within the law for disciplining students in these situations. Dr. Harrison.
Good evening. The Rockland High School administration does our own investigation into the threat that occurred toward Rockland High School on February 16th. Our school disciplinary procedures are different than the disciplinary procedures from the court. We follow all of our student handbook policies and procedures that are aligned to the Massachusetts State Discipline Statutes. I thought I'd take a few minutes tonight to go over this process that we use at Rockland High School. Under the Massachusetts Student Discipline Statutes and Regulations, which were amended pretty recently in July of 2014, the disciplinary process typically begins with what we call an emergency removal of any student. The emergency removal of a student gives the administrator the opportunity to remove the student from school prior to deciding whether the student will be suspended, pending the results of an investigation, which typically includes a suspension hearing or disciplinary hearing. A student during the emergency removal is not allowed on school grounds. This is part of the due process for the student. A student disciplinary hearing is set up during this two-day window for an emergency removal. There are three different types of statutes that indicate how we handle a specific situation. They have creative names, 37H, 37H and a half, and 37H and three-fourths. They couldn't just have a different letter. First, the chapter 71, 37H guides the following situations: possessions of students with a dangerous weapon, possessions of controlled substances, and the threat towards a member of our educational staff. These infractions allow us as administrators to expel a student. The only other opportunity to expel a student, which we hope we never have to do, is governed under 37H and a half, which is used if there's a felony against a student. So felony charges against a student may result in a student who is suspended for the duration of that charge, or if there is a conviction, adjudication or admission of guilt with respect to that felony, the student may be expelled. Making terroristic threats is a felony. Lastly, any other disciplinary offenses outlined in our student handbook are governed by 37H and three-fourths. Chapter 37H and three-fourths disciplinary offenses are treated differently than 37H and 37H and a half. Under the state statute, school administrators should avoid, if possible, suspending students for more than 10 days, and they may only suspend a student for a maximum of 90 school days. I want to reiterate that I cannot comment on individual student discipline, however, I hope this overview does shed some light into our procedures. We do follow all of our student handbook policies aligned to the Massachusetts Discipline laws. We take this incident very seriously. I want to thank the police department, the staff and our students for doing a good job during the shelter in place, and thank Dr. Cron, Ms. Feliz and the central office team for their support. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Harrison. So before we take questions, I'd like to thank the Rockland Police Department, especially Officer Schnebel and Chief Llewellyn, for their efficient and measured response to last Friday's incident. Within 30 minutes of receiving the call from the Boston Communication Center, what they call the BRIC, they had both students apprehended. It was really remarkable, and they worked very well within the school, so thank you. I'd also like to thank the faculty and staff in each of our five schools for their professionalism and calm during a very stressful situation. Also, our students should be commended for their cooperation and adherence to our protocols. Ms. Bond described this morning the moment her students moved from shelter in place to their next class, and said they were as calm as though nothing happened, and they just moved right on with their day. And I want to thank you for, thank parents for your trust. We communicate with you during situations like this as quickly as possible, but with social media, an incident like this heats up almost immediately, leaving parents to feel helpless, especially if their children are texting them, wondering what is going on. on. The overwhelming support of parents allows us to focus on safety and doing our job, so thank you. Finally, I really want to thank those folks who are here with me tonight. Having safety plans and procedures, you know, school committee, you're included in that, appreciating your trust and allowing us to do our jobs. It's very, very helpful, and I appreciate it very much. But I want to thank the folks that are here with me, the principals, having our safety plans and procedures, and we spent nearly two years going through and developing our new emergency response procedures, which are posted in every classroom throughout the district, and securing our doors, limiting access to our schools, requiring guests to check in, as well as the nearly 170 cameras we have in place throughout each of our five schools across all five. But it's only a part of maintaining a safe and welcoming school for our students and staff. This was actually my area of study in my doctoral program, school safety, bullying, the psychological effects of this, and I will tell you that the bigger part of school safety is relationships, undoubtedly, and those really only exist between people. So we can have all kinds of tools in place, but it really is, comes down to the people. And day-to-day programs like PBIS, SOS, signs of suicide, Second Step, and even the way our high school and our middle school and our elementary principals deal with discipline on a day-to-day basis, they are constantly teaching trust, and they're constantly developing and working to develop these relationships. But that is what we count on to maintain a safe school. If you see something, students, teachers, parents, you must say something. It's the law, first of all, but more importantly, it could prevent a disaster. So again, I want to say thank you very much because the tone is set by these people and each of your teachers who get it from you, and I'm proud to work in this district, and we did a very good job the other day, but we can always do better, and we're going to keep staying committed to sharpening that pencil on a daily basis and making sure that our schools are safe and kids feel safe when they're here, and faculty. That's my entire spiel.
And thank you, Judge Cronin, works from the top down. Thank you.
You guys can't go yet, because we're going to get the question. Are you guys going to ask any questions?
I have a question.
Excellent. I figured, that's why I wanted them to stand up here, not just to make me look good.
The question I have is, is this protocol and procedures in place for daycare?
That's a good question.
Our daycare has been trained.
Yeah.
They have been trained.
Yeah, all been ALIS trained.
All been ALIS trained.
Do they have this document?
This, yes.
Okay, so that's all.
It's in all of our schools, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you all. You know, I got to stand up there with you because I want you to know that I, and I can see that the rest of us, stand behind you, and we thank you for the work that you do in making sure our kids are safe, really. This past experience was one that was certainly unfortunate, but it's one that certainly, going forward into the future, can make us all feel comfortable that we have people that care about our kids and have our kids' safety in mind first and foremost, but also are clearly very well-prepared. Ethan, to you and Chief Llewellyn and Chief Duffy and the Rockland Police and Fire Department, just again, another example of the professionalism and how lucky we are as citizens of Rockland to have police and fire here for our families and our kids. And, boy, it's been such a great decision that we made jointly with Chief Llewellyn to bring you in and to have a SRO here on the ground here in Rockland schools. I think it's paid off on, you know, a daily occasion, not even just this major occasion. I think the relationship that you've built with our students is great for the students and their relationship with the Police Department, but I'm sure for you, it's great to be able to know and get a sense of what's going on and to be there in the case that an emergency should happen. I'm just, I feel very pleased, so thank you, thank all of you very, very much, and I'm sure the rest of you have some questions and comments as well. Please.
First off, Ethan, great job. I mean, I don't, has anybody else at our table gone through the ALIS training?
I have not.
You have not?
I have.
You did it in your school, or did you do it here?
Yeah.
Okay, so, I did it here the day that they trained the middle school teachers and staff. And I will tell you, even though you know what's going on, your blood pressure is still pumping. So, with that being said, I look forward to when we train the students. I know training elementary gets a little different from training the middle school and the high school, but I think, I think it's important. I think it needs to be done, and unfortunately, now, here we are, it's March, we've had a scare, there was an issue, there's been a few issues around the country, and we're looking at it in the face, and we have to get moving on that. I'm glad to see that we have a parent night planned to get that rolling. I think it's great. I like that we put in a warrant for the door things. My big thing is, to the kids who think it's funny, it's not. Nothing is funny about this. You may think it's a joke, it's not. It scares everybody, including people who don't have kids at the school. And to see the response that we had from the police, from the school, I'm very happy with. So to that, I say, good job, and let's keep it moving forward, so.
The point Mike, Mr. Gruffalo makes about the doorstops, I think some people have made suggestion about that, and there's been a lot of discussion about that. It's a town meeting warrant that the school department's put forward for this year's town meeting that would install an emergency doorstop in every classroom in Rockland in case of an emergency lockdown. So that's, I know that's been asked quite a bit.
And that we approved ironically Monday before this occurred, so.
If I could just be briefly on the doorstop.
Sure.
Okay. So, before we decided, what, I didn't, all right, before, before we decided what we wanted to use for doorstop, we went out, and I wanted to make sure I tested the device. I wanted to make sure that it was something that, I didn't take the word of what a company or a corporation was telling me that this was going to be an effective device. I went out with Sergeant Rignovio, who's a member of the regional SWAT team, and he brought all of his tools that he uses to breach doors. We tested this item numerous ways, and the door itself failed before the device that we had on the bottom of the door failed. I'm very confident in what we've chosen to use for these doors, and I think it'll be a good thing to add to the safety.
This device is for both out and in opening doors?
Yep, it's an inward, and I was a little skeptical of it at first. It is a device that works on both inward and outward opening doors. We've tried multiple times both ways, and no entry was gained.
Just to that point too, what's going through my mind is that I'm also on the building committee, and it gives me a new light of ideas that as we go forward, and if we do get approval for building a building, we've got to now make sure it meets certain criterias to stop things. You know, stop, you know, whether it's weapons or people or anything like that, you know, to make sure those things are replaced in new buildings.
I'm seeing great stuff in all the new buildings that I've visited. Double-entry models where people don't gain access to the classrooms or the student areas until they've gone through sort of a double entry. There are a lot of things like that that are small but important.
Yeah.
But again, it's people. It's people having eyes, people, teachers in the hallway during lunch, in between classes, it's Officer Schnabel, it's the car parked in front of the school, it's all of that.
Somebody just walking through the school.
What's that?
Just somebody walking through the school.
No doubt.
I mean, you know, I mean, I see it in my school, and I, in the school, and I'm in a nice, quiet neighborhood in Dorchester.
Right.
And, you know, even when we have, one of the things that I've noticed of late, and it's raised my consciousness at school, is that when we have subs come in, and they're a new sub, and you see somebody walk in the hall, you know, and you say, "Hi."
Right.
"Who are you?"
Right, exactly. Who are you?
Yeah, you got to ask, you got to talk. See, anybody that looks different, strange, I mean strange, that doesn't normally belong near, you got to talk to them.
Right.
Ask.
The other thing, and Mrs. Lamb, you were a part of this conversation the other day we had with Mr. Patton. We have to educate the students not to just open the door.
Right.
To let people in.
Oh, sure.
We had a, probably a 15-minute conversation when I was picking up my meeting notes, that he's gone to the door and he has a swipe, but before he even hits it, the students, he doesn't know who he, they don't know each other, and they're letting him in the front door. No, Mr. Patton's not going to do anything, but nobody else knows that, and that's something that we need to really drive home to the kids. They think they're being nice, "Oh, it's raining, let me open the door," but it's a dangerous time now that we can't be doing that, so.
Dr. Harrison, how was the environment back at school today?
It was good, very positive. Our students were happy to be back. They felt good. I don't know if Macy has anything to add, but I just felt we had a good vibe today.
Yeah.
Macy, what was your thoughts about the situation as a, you know, as a member of the student body, and I'm sure it was a difficult day for everybody, but, you know, having had the chance to have the week off to kind of wrap your brain around it a little bit, can you maybe share with us a little bit about your feelings about the experience?
So, the shelter in place was fine, like, we didn't, I mean, it made us a little nervous, but, I mean, we didn't think we were in danger or anything. It just kind of, I don't want to use the word lockdown, but like, when you're sheltering, it just kind of does raise your blood pressure. But, I mean, all of us were fine for the most part, and then we went to G Block, and we were all fine. So, things proceeded as usual.
Great, back to usual business today, back to school. Everyone felt safe and good to back to school. That's great to hear.
Yeah.
Great. Mr. Phelps?
Just one of our jobs, I think maybe one of the most important jobs we have, is we're kind of the ears in the community, and you have to know how proud this entire community is of you. And I also just want to add myself, how proud I am to be associated with you folks. The professionalism, the communication, everything that happened, you can't think of a better outcome as to how everything worked, how everything was in place. All the rehearsals, if you will, the two people have gone through, the hours that you've spent on this, it all showed. And it, to echo Mr. Biggins' words, along with the Fire Department, along with the Police Department, but you folks are the core, you folks live it, you're here, you know the situations. I'm just so proud, as is the community, of the way this was handled.
Sir Feliz, how's it going?
I'm personally saddened by the state of the world, that this is where we are, right, protecting our kids in school. That being said, I'm immensely grateful for the amount of preparation that your team has done and that you guys do every day. I mean, I did active shooter drills in the military, and you expect that in the military. I'm just sad for our children that that's what we're doing for them, but that's what we need to do. So thank you for your professionalism and the amount of work that goes into preparing this sort of safety plan. I just wonder what kind of emotional support we have in place for kids who are feeling rattled or unsafe after the events that happened nationally and then the events that happened locally.
I can let someone else respond. I mean, we have, we're very fortunate to have adjustment counselors in each of our five schools, so we've invested a lot in social, emotional supports, so they're in place. I think the teachers are a huge support, but I'd like to, maybe one of the principals or could just speak to what you're doing at the elementary level versus middle and high?
We have, we have morning meetings in our school. Well, I'll go back to, Dr. Cronin asked us to combine our efforts to come with a united front. So Michelle's school psychologist, Ally Scambata, put together a draft of what we should say. So we shared that with our teachers last night and this morning, and told our teachers that if any child had any concerns about what happened both in Florida or heard about what here in Rockland, that this, we told them they were safe, we told them scary things happen, and that we were all here to keep them safe, and if they needed to talk to someone else other than their teacher, that they could send them down to the adjustment counselor and the school psychologist. So we all did that. We shared that also with daycare, so daycare could advise their workers first thing this morning if children came in and they were scared. So we did that. We have our morning meetings in our classrooms where teachers, I know one of my fourth-grade teachers, one of the children brought it up, so they had a conversation about it, about scary things happen, and just reassured them that we're all here for them. So, at the elementary level, I think the best thing is, is just, you know, that silent hug.
Thank you.
I actually, only because, I'll say it selfishly, because my daughter is at Memorial Park, and my little one will be there next year. Ethan, I'm not scared, I'm prepared, I know all about ALIS. Have you seen that book?
Yeah, we, when we went through the ALIS training, it was recommended. It is something that we will, using as we start to roll out ALIS with the younger kids.
Is the plan for that, to have it like a book per the classroom or something like that?
We're still ironing out exactly how we're going to roll out with each one. We want to get through this parent night first, and then.
It's a very small paperback book.
I have, I asked.
And Mike, also, I feel as though you need to keep it at their level, and we prepare for fire drills, we prepare for bad guys, and that's what we just say to them, and, you know, teach them, we have a safe place, like when you go to escape your house, when you plan an escape route, we do the same thing at school, and then we have a meeting up place, and ours is where we go to evacuate, so the kids know that, and that's a routine that we have, and it's just simple at their level kind of wording that we do.
And I agree, that's for, you have to do it, especially at that level. I know you move up to middle school and you get to high school, it's a different wiring.
You can't train, we can't, we can't teach the younger kids the same way we're going to teach the high school kids, it just can't happen.
You can't be too, it would not end well. I just was curious because we picked up the book just to check it out, just to see, so I was curious. I figured you would.
Yeah, we.
You've seen it and have it, so.
Yeah, we do.
Great job, I all get it, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you.
Next on tonight's agenda is personnel information for January and February. We have a bit of a brief list here. Dr. Cronin, is there anything you'd like to highlight?
No, nothing to highlight there, just resignation.
Thank you very much. Last, but certainly not least, on tonight's agenda, our public service announcements, and we will start with Ms. Macy Jones, our student representative.
I was just one, so, there's been protests around the country, and I'm not sure if you are aware of the walkout being planned for March 14th, and I was just wondering your thoughts on it.
Twenty-fourth, is it?
Fourteenth. You got to move back because of school vacation.
I was just wondering your thoughts, if that could happen.
Gentlemen, ladies?
I'll start off, I think you and I mentioned this earlier, actually. My thoughts on this are pretty simple. When you're in school, we are responsible for you. The staff is responsible for you. You walk out the door, you have now left our control. What scares me is, one, you're getting up, leaving the class that you were to be at. You're disrupting the class, you're walking out the front door, you're no longer in the protection of the school, all that stuff adds up to a problem. I would not be too thrilled to see that occur, to see our students leaving the safety of the building and disrupting their class, further than it's already been disrupted last week, so.
My thoughts are, I am so happy that our Rockland High School students are socially conscious and that are aware of what's going on and that care, and that realize that there's a lot going on in the world, and the world's a scary place, and I know that you all have opinions and you have strong feelings, and, of course, this is your school, this is where you go to school and where you want to feel safe, and a problem, you have big ideas about the big world that you want to grow up and live in. So I think that, you know, I think that I have the utmost respect for any student who wants to have their opinion be heard. The one thing I would caution about is politicizing such a movement, whether you're on one side of an issue or another. My perspective on this is, should be, our message should be one of unity and one of trying to figure out a way that we can support each other and love each other, and to build a culture in which that such events don't happen anymore. I'm not a gun guy, I'm not a, you know, political guy on one side of the issue or this or the other, but I would just be careful not to let some folks who may have an agenda or may have a political agenda to lead you or to use you in a certain way to help advance their message. But I applaud any student who has, wants to be a part of this dialogue, because I think it's important that you do so, and I think that we, as a school community, are already starting to begin different ways that we might have a forum to be able to do that, and I think that you and your role, Macy, as a student representative, might be able to, you know, have somewhat of a leadership role in doing that. So I don't necessarily know what that might look like here in Rockland, but, you know, I think that that day may be observed in one way or another, but I hope that you feel welcome to approach your principals and your teachers and other students in the schools can approach their SGA and approach Macy and have a good dialogue about it. I guess that would be my feeling about it. Anybody else, ladies or gentlemen?
I have this, I have this problem, you know, it's a challenge. How about this? Is that, on the one hand, you know, you are in a safe building, you're in a building, and once you leave that building, you leave yourself open for whatever happens when you get outside that door, knowing that that might happen, somebody out there might be already there and say, "Hey, I'm waiting for you guys to step up," you know, and whatever, they might just throw eggs at you because they have a different opinion. On the other hand, I'm looking at it and saying, "We need to protest this," you know, and I'd be out there with you.
I fully support peaceful demonstration, and I think what we're all seeing is that your generation is changing the world, my generation is failing to change the world. So I fully support that you guys recognize that schools need to be safe, and so a peaceful demonstration is how you get heard. I've seen other places are, I think, doing something where they're having voter registration set up outside the school, that people are, you know, walking out to voter registration. I mean, do something constructive with. So I fully support that you guys recognize that schools need to be safe, and so a peaceful demonstration is how you get heard. I've seen other places are, I think, doing something where they're having voter registration set up outside the school, that people are, you know, walking out to voter registration. I mean, do something constructive with your protest, if that's what you're gonna do. That's how I feel.
My thoughts are, number one, be safe. And in order to be safe, I think probably you should have a plan of some sort, and don't be afraid to involve the SRO and the administration, because they might be able to help protect you from people that you might not want in attendance, not necessarily your student body. I'm talking about people that are drawn to this sort of thing, just because, whatever. So just be safe, but I applaud the student body for taking a proactive approach to this. Again, I'm proud of you, it's great.
I will say, it's admirable. It is. I didn't want it to sound, but I get nervous you guys leave the building, right? We have gyms, we have a really big gym, we have an auditorium, right? We have places in the school. Why not set up in where you're safe, some sort of rally? I'm sure a couple student leaders went and talked to Officer Schnabel, and talked to Dr. Harrison, and something could be worked out in that aspect, because it makes, hey, listen, something needs to be done, we all know that. I just don't want our kids getting outside the building and something going wrong. I'm just, it's too much publicization of everything going on, and that, nothing makes you want to make a statement more than that on the other side, and I wouldn't want that. I wouldn't want, like Mr. Mills said, somebody throwing eggs at you, I wouldn't want people screaming at you. It just, it's not, it's not what you need. What you want to do makes sense, let's try and find a way to make it work inside the building where everybody's safe, because it's gonna be peaceful. You guys are outside, you're peaceful, it's not you guys I'm worried about.
Go to the stadium.
You know, stadium school property, I mean.
Well, I think if nothing else, this has given us all a very important opportunity to open a very important dialogue. There's been a lot smarter people than me that haven't been able to answer this thing yet, and maybe your generation will be the one to do it, and we can only hope that. But the Rockland school community has a great representative in you, and I applaud you for the question that you just asked. That's kind of an important and tough question to ask a group like this, and I think it's an important place to start talking about it, and at least to hopefully create an environment in our schools that will be able to talk about it more, and be able to get to that day and figure out some good solution for everybody.
Thank you.
Very good. Now, how about you? I'll ask you the same question. What are your thoughts about it?
I won't mention any names.
You don't have to mention it.
You don't have to mention names.
But there is a movement in the works.
Good.
And so, I will bring up your points, Mr. Garofalo, and see if something...
I mean, I, listen, you set it up smart, you set it up safe, I'll be standing right there with you guys. Just let me know when and where, okay?
All right. Anything else on your announcement tonight, or have you had anything else to share?
No, that's it.
Great. Dr. Small?
I have some strong feelings, and so I took the time to write something, so it may be a bit wordy, but please bear with me, and if I get emotional, just excuse that. It just comes from strong feelings and passion. So, and some of this is a reiteration of what was said already, but I need to comment on the events that occurred over the past two weeks. I, as both a mother and a pediatrician, am heartbroken over the tragedy in Florida, as well as the event in our own personal community. Over the past week, I, like most parents, have held my children a little closer, hugged them a little longer, and said I love you a little more often. I want to personally and publicly thank Dr. Cronin, Mr. Forlisi, School Resource Officer, Ethan Schnabel, Chief Llewellyn, and the entire Rockland Police Department, Dr. Harrison, Ms. Bond, all the teachers, guidance counselor, and every other adult in our schools who were well-trained, well-prepared, and handled the situation at the high school with the utmost professionalism and best possible outcome. But the truth is that all this good work is reactive and not preventative. As a country, we need to make sure this never happens again, and we all have a personal responsibility to ensure that this never happens in our own community. There are different ideas how to prevent another tragedy, and the how is not what I want to discuss tonight. What I want to talk about are three things that each of us can do to ensure this never happens here in Rockland. Number one is gun safety, and I must admit, I have not been able to bring myself to talk to my first grader about school massacres. I can't bring myself to shatter her innocence, intrude on her childhood, or burden her with my own personal nightmares. So I cannot provide any guidance on how to talk to your kids about these horrendous events. I can encourage you, though, all of us, to talk to our kids about gun safety. Between 2012 and 2014, 1,300 children died every year from injuries sustained from guns. Young kids should know what guns are, to never touch them, and to tell an adult, a parent, a teacher, a guidance counselor, a coach, if they see one, if another child shows them one or touches one. Talk to parents before playdates and ask if there are guns in the home, or share if there are guns in your home, so that people can talk to their children and prepare them. Be sure that all kids know that should never touch a gun, and that guns should be locked up, and anyone who chooses to own guns, please be a responsible gun owner. Keep your guns locked and safe and separated from ammunition. Secondly is mental health. Being a parent is hard, but being a teenager is so much worse. Life is hard trying to be a child and adult at the same time, when you're also controlled by hormones. So get to know your kids, even when they try and shut you out. Talk to them, ask about their lives, their feelings, their friends. If they're feeling lonely, or isolated, or depressed, help them, or reach out and get them help. There should be no stigma associated with this. These are hard times, and we have to do better. So find a good counselor, reach out to your child's pediatrician, reach out to the guidance counselor at school, whatever you have to do to help them get through rocky times. And number three, we need to vote. If you're 18, you're eligible to vote. Everyone who's eligible to vote needs to ensure that they're registered to vote. If you don't know if you're registered, or if you need to get registered, go to town hall, and then vote. There are town elections, in fact, there's an upcoming town election in April, where you get to vote for us, the school committee, among other town positions. There's state legislature elections, there's congressional elections, in addition to the presidential elections. And there are actually plenty of congressional elections coming up in November. All of these elections are important, don't just show up for the presidential election. Presidential elections are the most well-attended, and in 2016, only 58% of eligible voters showed up to vote. Each one of us have issues that matter to us, it may be your taxes, it may be immigration, it may be Second Amendment issues. Find out from candidates where they stand on the issues, and then vote based on where they stand. Don't vote based on advertising, or who your family or friends are voting for, vote based on the issues. Show up, vote, and then hold those elected officials accountable. They are public servants, and they are accountable to you. My plea to our community is that we work together to ensure the safety of our children. We need to ensure that we are teaching and practicing gun safety, we're checking in with and addressing the mental health of our children, and we are involved in electing officials who represent our beliefs and are advocating for us. As a country, we need to prevent the school shooting tragedies, but as a community, we have a responsibility to ensure this never happens in our community. We owe that to our children.
Thank you, Dr. Small. Mr. Phelps?
Eloquent, really, that sums it up, but very, very nice. I'm gonna change things a little bit, because there's been an awful lot of negativity and an awful lot of worry, and I'm just gonna encourage people, get out, support these kids that we love so much. Great winter sports, three teams champions, three coaches champions, suggests that maybe you have that little forum that you had on TV last year? Maybe the same people are gonna be there, but that's a good thing.
Yeah.
That's a good thing. An awful lot of positive things happening in amongst the disappointment and worry and fear that we all share, and that's all I have.
Thank you. Mr. Mills?
Couple things. One is, I grew up with guns in the house. My father was a police officer in Boston, we had them, you know, my mother came from North Carolina, from the, you know, so we always, always had weapons, cousins and everything else. I don't particularly care for any weapons in the house, particularly my wife. But you have to be aware, there has been incidents in my own family where we've had, you know, a family member have a rough time, and I knew that those people had guns, and the first thing is to make sure they don't have access to them. So if you know that, make sure they don't have access to ground those guns. But on a happier note, school's almost over, right? You're ready to graduate, right?
And like, six days left.
It's not that far away, right? And, so, we have to look to those happy times, you know, getting, you know, getting you the hell out of here and, you know, moving on, no.
That's a happy time?
That's a happy time. Now, for her it is.
All right.
Okay, not for you.
Not for us, not for us.
Right. So, but, you know, this is the time, we're getting all that stuff done, that, you know, make sure, make sure everybody, whether they're graduating, or whether they're moving on, you know, getting their work done, and, like I said, it's not much longer, no. How many days left?
Sixty.
See?
Who's counting?
Who's counting, right?
Mr. Garofalo?
Yeah, to echo what Mr. Phelps said, he left out, we had a father-son coach and player of the year on the hockey team with Michael and Mike Flaherty. We had, I believe, both, we had players of the year on both basketball teams, and we had a player who is going to Shriners in football as well. So we've had a pretty good run on that. So things are going great on that front. Again, we've echoed the police department, and the administration did great with that situation. And the one thing I will always say, I caution those who run to Facebook, specifically the pages about the town, and start putting misinformation out there, starting up more of a frenzy. Perhaps it might be best if we wait until what's going on before we start putting stuff out there, and that is all.
Thank you, Mr. Garofalo. Really, most of everything's been said tonight, as far as my, on my note, serious meeting, but sometimes serious topics come up, and one thing I can say is that I feel very proud to be in a school culture that we don't bury these things, that when something like this happens, that we have an open dialogue and discussion about it. Sometimes these issues are painful, sometimes they're polarizing, but student safety is not, and that's something that we can all get behind and be on board and agree together, that that is something that we will always, always strive for, no matter how well this situation went, that we are always striving to be better, always striving to look backward and see how we could have handled the situation better, or, you know, just see what the future might bring. So, that being said, you know, although we had a difficult couple weeks here, Rockland kids are good kids, we have a lot of good kids in this school. You know, it's, something negative comes up, and it's easy to, you know, see it on the news and think about that, but we've got good kids here in Rockland. 99.9% of the kids that go to school here show up and do what they're supposed to do, they go to class every day, they excel on the sports fields, and they're just good kids, and are, you know, they get it from the administration, they get it from their parents, they get it from the teachers. We really have, really a fine culture here in Rockland, and sometimes you shine the brightest in times of difficulty. So hopefully we won't have to go through that again, but with that being said, that's all I have to say. We have a motion to adjourn, do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Thank you very much, have a good night.